The commission, it's an unusual process and we only do it here every couple of years. And I know that in past years from time to time, you may be in a little confusion about how the process worked. So myself and our city treasurer consulted with New Mexico Municipal League. We had a conversation with both Fulgenetti and Ed Zandell of the Municipal League about how the process is intended to work. And if I could just for, real briefly for a minute, review and relay to you the recommendations of the Municipal League. So their recommendation is simply in regard to the position of mayor and mayor pro temp, that's decided by the commission here tonight. And a commissioner can nominate a fellow commissioner or themselves. And there are as many nominations as you would like. A nomination does not require a second. So if we have numerous nominations for mayor, then there will be a vote starting with the first nominee that was placed. And so a commissioner can vote aye or nay on that nominee. And then we can proceed to other nominations and vote aye or nay on those nominations. And then we'll proceed to the mayor pro temp, similar process. So that's in short, the recommendation of the Municipal League, just to clarify.
Okay, thank you. If I may, commissioners and manager, since the people have spoken in this last election and they voted it back in as it was, I would like to see if we could just make a motion to keep the current commission as it is.
And I would state that, you know, the recommendation is that you place a name in nomination for the mayor, so it's not a motion and it does not require a second, but we would place a name into nomination.
Okay, I'll amend that then. As Sandy Mance as mayor, Neil Sagata as mayor pro temp, and the other commissioners that are currently on their district.
Are there any other nominations?
And so I think that the process would be, we would now call for a vote of each commissioner, aye or nay, on the nomination of Sandy Mance for mayor.
Commissioner Schuster, aye. Commissioner Jacomo?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sagata?
Aye.
Mayor Mance?
Aye, I guess. Thank you.
And now, city clerk, we would have a similar vote for the nomination of Commissioner Sagata as mayor pro temp.
Commissioner Schuster?
Aye.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Mayor Mance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sagata?
Aye.
Okay, deliberate an act on nomination, on appointment of commission members to city boards. Do you have a list of all the city boards, Tricia?
I do. I guess it's kind of up to you guys if you want to stay on the same boards you're already on since your arrangements didn't change.
Well, go ahead and read what that is.
Okay, um, let me see here. Um, mayor pro temp Sagata with the airport board?
I think Mr. Chavez and I are going to swap boards on that. Mr. Chavez would like to be on the airport board.
Okay.
And I, what did you say, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec.
We're going to switch on those.
Okay. So Mr. Sagata will be Parks and Rec. The Raton Water Board requires the mayor pro temp and then one other commissioner, which is currently Mr. Chavez and Mr. Sagata.
I'd like to remain.
Okay. ETZ, Mr. Sagata?
Sure.
Arts and Cultural, Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Library Board, Mr. Jacomo?
Yes, I'd like to be Mayor Mance.
Okay, Planning and Zoning, Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
ETZ zoning authority is the mayor?
Yes.
The RPS Board requires the mayor and one other commissioner. Currently it is, um, Mr. Jacomo and the mayor.
I'd like to stay on the projects ahead of us.
And then the Housing Authority is Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Senior Citizens Board, Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Okay, and the North Central New Mexico Economic Development Board, Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to approve?
I would think that we would want a motion for approval of the board assignments.
Make a motion that we accept the assignments as stated by this attorney.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the appointments of the commissioners as reported by the city clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Approval of the February 23 regular commission meeting minutes.
There's a couple corrections and typos maybe.
Okay.
The heading, the date shows February 26, I thought it was the 23rd.
Yes, and I corrected that.
And also down on item four, or bullock one, the date there should be March 8.
8 instead of the 9?
No, it says February 9.
It says February 9.
Oh, it's March, I'm sorry.
Today's date, yeah.
There's one other one on item I, and it says temporary transfer. It's under the minutes of temporary transfer to cover payments at the multimodal vendors pending, instead of pending.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to approve, accept February 23 regular meeting commission meeting minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the February 23 regular commission meeting minutes as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on appointment to city board. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and commission, in your packet you have two applications which pertain to the Housing Authority of the city of Raton. At the top there, Margaret J. Evans has submitted an application. This is for, an application for reappointment. Mrs. Evans has served on the board and has come up for reappointment for your consideration. We also have the application of Terry Sagata, and that would be to fill a vacant seat on that board.
I'm staying out of this one, folks. So we have two applicants for one position, is that correct?
We have two, two open seats. One is for a reappointment of an existing seat. The other application is for, is to fill a vacant seat. So there are two seats, yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint and approve both applicants.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Margaret Evans and Terry Sagata to the Raton Housing Authority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on a public celebration permit for Raton Main Street annual Spring into Hops and Vines event on April 9th, Bosque Brewing Company.
Madam Mayor, I found that nothing wrong with the insurance though. Application is intact, make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the public celebration permit for the Raton Main Street's annual Spring into Hops and Vine event, April 9th, for Bosque Brewing Company.
Mayor, we do have members of Raton Main Street on hand, and if we might just call on them to tell us a little about the event and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Good evening. We've got a poster for you. This is, will be our fourth annual. It's a fundraiser for Raton Main Street. We give beer and wine tasting. We give $15 for a free, this year a stemless wine glass and eight tasting tickets. We have La Chirapata Winery.
Commissioner, Mayor, it's La Chirapata Winery out of Dixon, New Mexico. We have a new brewery this year. It's Bosque out of Albuquerque. So they're traveling that distance to come for this event and are excited about it. And, you know, it's also a good way to have them, is to look at our community for possible breweries or wineries here, you know, so.
And they're very excited to come. We have silent auction. We're getting lots of good donations from Vermejo Park, NRA, hopefully, Santa Fe Trail, some of the businesses downtown. So we're excited about this event. It's a good fundraiser for Raton Main Street, helps bring us our bands in the summer, et cetera.
And it's held at the museum, and so it's a great venue for the museum as well to be able to display all of what they have.
And of course, 21 and older have to have ID, and we'll be manning that.
And tickets are only $15, so get yours.
That's right. We have live entertainment too, Randy Whitman and Phyllis Nixfeldt. So come join.
It'll be fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to? Oh, please. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the public celebration permit for Raton Main Street annual Spring Hops and Vines event on April 9, 2016.
I think we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the Bosque Brewing Company. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes, motion passes. Deliberate an act on a public celebration permit for Raton Main Street's annual Spring into Hops and Vines event on April 9th from La, what is it?
Chirapata.
Chirapata Winery.
I have a movement, we accept the permit for La Chirapata for the annual Hops and Vines event on April 9.
I'll take a minute.
We have a motion and a second to accept the public celebration permit for Raton Main Street's annual Spring into Hops and Vine event on April 9th for La Chirapata Winery. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Main Street. We now have a presentation by Mr. Rick Klein, who is the city manager from the city of La Jolla, and Commissioner Bill Sawal, county commissioner, on the Tiger 7 grant and discussion on the Tiger 8 grant application for railroad improvements.
Yes, mayor, commissioners, city manager, clerk. Okay, in your packet you should find a document that had, now, this is a first brush on this. This is currently being reviewed by the Federal Railroad Administration, but it's the statement of work and, like, even today I had a meeting and, of course, we went over this document. And one of the things, you know, I put down the Southwest Chief Route Improvement Project. Well, it's the advancement, because this is Tiger 7. And Tiger 6 was actually the improvement. Now, when we started this endeavor about five years ago, Amtrak had came through to all of our communities and told us that if we didn't do, get $100 million worth of improvements, we were going to lose our Amtrak Southwest chief. So we formed a three-state commission, and I was fortunate to meet this man here, Commissioner Bill Sawal, at that very first meeting. And a gentleman named Matt Allen out of Garden City, and he's city manager there. And we went back to our respective states and started these coalitions. And we were successful with Tiger 6, and that was an application for $22.5 million from, out of Garden City. Last year with Tiger 7, we were successful for an application coming out of the city of La Jolla for $25,500. And so this is going to be the scope of work. Now, in Tiger 6, we didn't have a New Mexico component. It was Colorado and Kansas, mainly Kansas. You know, we couldn't get any money out of our DOT that year either. But this last year, we were able to raise $9,233,000. The $233,000 came from all the towns and counties throughout our region, western Kansas, southeastern Colorado, and northern New Mexico. So, now, we've whittled this down to $38 million, okay? We've already received $48.66 million. Now, that doesn't add up to $100 million. So what did, what's the difference? We worked with Burlington Northern and Amtrak on some efficiencies, some of the things that they were asking for within their $100 million. And they realized, eh, you know, that's more of a ballpark, and so we have it down to this $38 million. Now, Tiger 7, Tiger 7 will, I'll find out Thursday what the schedule for the New Mexico portion, but that'll be replacement of 19,000 ties and 47,000 tons of ballast on New Mexico DOT-owned rail down by Lamy, New Mexico. Now, one of the things, as you look at this document, and it was a very good catch this morning from Colfax County, they said the slow orders in New Mexico on that first page are currently in place on all but five miles of the route, mainly due to the condition of ties and ballast. Well, that's state-owned New Mexico rail. You know, it's not the entire state or anything, it's just that 24.5 miles, I believe they have, down by Lamy, where it comes into the rail runner. So I'll find out more as far as when their project will take off. Now, for Kansas and Colorado on what they call the La Jolla subdivision, it will start on June 14th, and they want it to be done by December 31st. So, this year, Senator Cory Gardner had invited me to come back and talk about long-distance trains and in Washington DC at Senate Commission on Commerce, Science, and Transportation. And one of the things that I learned when I was out there is, we're one of the, we are the only one that has like a coalition that is doing what they're doing. We're one of the only ones that have been successful with two Tiger grants. Now, here they've just passed the FAST Act, and that's their transportation bill. And for the first time, there is funding for railroads. You know, they have a section, you know, that for the Celia Line, the northeast corridor, up, you know, from New York into Boston area. And they have a state of good repair, and you will look at some of those funds, need be, but also they have a freight one. And, but they have a 25% set aside for rural areas, which we really truly appreciate. Now, I bet, you know, it's only 2.5% of the transportation budget, but at least it's something. And so, when I was at this commission meeting, our senate meeting, I realized that these, all these senators and stuff, they're looking at us, see what we can do. You know, and see how we're going to finish this off. Because nobody can believe that, out here in the west, that we've received two Tiger grants. And they know that we didn't, another one. Maybe a little bit of one on Tiger 9, if there's one. So what we're going to do for Tiger 8 is we're going to shoot for $25 million. Now, we realize what's going on, you know, with the three states. So what we did was City Lamar will be the applicant. You know, when I was coming down here this morning, I was going to ask whether Colfax County and Raton. But once I started seeing, where is the rail? You know, what is our chances of opportunity to get money? And so we said, okay, let's, you know, let's wait and go with New Mexico next year, as far as, you know, to finish off the $13 million, see what's needed with all the line, clear up a few items. So we're going to concentrate on the, some rail that's out of Hutchinson to Dodge City and Dodge City, and little sections that they don't have. But with Tiger 7, you know, between Tiger 6, Tiger 7, we have 127 contiguous miles, and you'll read this in the document, of improved rail infrastructure. That's only lasted for over 100 years. I mean, you know, once we do this, we're done, right? Okay, so, but in New Mexico, I'll find out for Tiger 8, what is needed. But what we're doing now is coming through and asking, you know, since we have a new applicant, and we'll come hit you guys up probably next year, or hopefully, and finish this puppy off. But, you know, in our neck of the woods, we always say, you know, hey, when the iron's hot, start branding. Well, when I had these senators coming out and they said, hey, you know, we're watching to see how you finish this off, because we want to try it in our area. How did you do it? Well, we did it through grassroots effort, and it's through all of our dedication that we're going to make this work and we're going to get through this $100 million. $38 million, sounds a lot better than that $100 million when they hit us up four or five years ago. This morning, I did present to Colfax County, and I'll let Bill state what happened there.
Okay, well, the quest is for, you know, for Tiger 7, we requested $12,500 in matching funds. Colfax County will be committing to pledging the $12,500 for Tiger 8. Also, I think one of the real positives that helped us along last time was we got more at county to come in, $5,000, Maxwell Springer, Semarone, all of the thousand. We will be reaching out, and the initial hope is that all of them will commit again. So, you know, I think that played a real positive in us succeeding on this Tiger 7 and hopefully again on the Tiger 8.
When I told them about our inner-city travel, is that when I get on train, I go down to Santa Fe, or if I go, get on train, go out to Dodge City, that is our inner-city travel. It's just our suburbs, a little farther out from me. So they do realize, and so, you know, City of La Jolla, we're going to put up $12,500. City Lamar is going to, I'll talk to City of Trent Adden and start, and with the counties. I know we already talked to Springer, and they're looking at putting it on their agenda for the $1,000. So we'd like to request the same from you as far as $12,500 to further our efforts.
And my understanding is that for the Tiger 8, again, the emphasis for New Mexico will be on the state-owned portion of the line, which is where the bulk of the work is needed.
That's right. Okay.
And...
And we don't have to have money for the grant writing itself, and it's being picked up by BNSF, which is huge to us.
Okay, and March the 17th, Mr. Klein will be presenting to the Mexico Highway Commission at their meeting in Las Vegas. Again, hoping that they will come across with a million dollar donations, which they did for 7.
Kansas already said, okay, same thing as last year, you know, you get a million out of Colorado and New Mexico, we're in. Yeah, I love that part. So I meet the Colorado Transportation Commission on the 16th up in Denver, and I'll come straight down and present at the Las Vegas.
On the 17th.
On the 17th. And then I'm scheduled for Santa Fe County on the 29th. And I know on the 16th, I'll go to the NPO and Narpo.
Narpo.
Meeting, and Clayton.
I'd like to point out that the two gentlemen here have put in effort over a period of years on this, and to pull together the DOTs of three states, all of the communities along the way, BNSF, elements of the federal government, that's a, that's an enormous task. And I want to give my appreciation to the two gentlemen that are present here. I think they know so much about a railroad now, they could probably run the railroad.
Run one.
Thank you guys for your efforts.
Thank you.
When I ran for county commissioner, it wasn't on my radar.
It wasn't on your radar? Soon came on though, didn't it, Bill? Does anyone else have any questions for either Mr. Klein or Mr. Sawal?
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if the commission would like to, we will have that consideration of, placed on the agenda for the next meeting, for your consideration and action.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And you'll have my card, so.
We all have a card.
So give me a bit of hollering.
I'll get this to you, and then I'll get back to see you after.
We have a presentation by Mr. Bill Fegan, courtesy discussion regarding a new Schuler project, and a guest will be present.
Mayor Mance and commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. This is not a Schuler project.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll make a correction. Right. This is a personal project. First, a history, one minute. Twenty-some years ago, we were approached, a group of us here in Raton, by two playwrights from Albuquerque with a play about the Santa Fe Trail. And we did the show, was called Born of the Sun. The playwrights were Madhara and Paula Paul. Madhara's no longer with us, she died a couple of years ago, but I have with me tonight Miss Paula Paul, the other playwright. We did the play for five performances, and since that time, it has been in my craw that part of the identity of Raton is that we are on the Santa Fe Trail, and we should be doing something about it. End of history. In the recent past, I said, where is the Santa Fe Trail? Some people say First Street, some people say Second Street, but I know there are ruts out at the Whittington Center. So I approached Wayne Armocost, executive director, and gave him an idea of reproducing with a team of professionals, Born of the Sun, the Santa Fe Trail story. Nobody in New Mexico has done anything about the Santa Fe Trail or exploited it. I put together a team. We will be using the Coors Building. We intend to do two weeks of the show in October. And I have with me tonight several of my team. First of all, I'd like you to meet Paula Paul, one of the authors of Born of the Sun. Paula?
I just want to tell you that I think it's really an exciting project because the history here is so exciting and so fascinating and touches the whole nation, I think. It has impacted the whole nation. So we wrote this play 20 years ago, and with the idea of having, with it becoming an outdoor drama, and that's still our dream. And I know it's still Madh's dream too, because she, she was, she was the one who came up with the idea and asked me to help her write the play, and it was her idea to have something done on a really grand scale, like the play in Texas. And now we're starting, we're getting started, thanks to Bill. And we're going to start small, but it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for a wonderful part of the state and some exciting history. So thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So good to have you here. By the way, she came on the train from Albuquerque, and she will leave tomorrow morning on the train. And tomorrow morning, we will all descend on Billy Dee and discuss this, and on this, that, and the other. After we did the five performances of the show, we were approached by Pat Veltre. She found some money and said, could we do a shortened version and tour it to the schools as a history lesson? We did that. We did 45-minute version of the show. We hired TJ Mendez, local director, actor, who got his start right here in Raton at the Schuler Theater. He said he started in eighth grade, and since that time, he has been everywhere in the world with a major show that he has been directing and been the production manager for. And so it was only natural that we invite TJ to come back to Raton and direct the production that we intend to do. TJ Mendez.
Well, I'd like to publicly thank Bill for the opportunity. I'm really excited to be a part of this project, and I'm especially happy to come back home to Raton, where my family still lives. Today, we went out to the Whittington Center, did a site survey of the building, inspected the stage, and just looked around, got some ideas together, and we're ready to move forward, and we're really happy and excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
And we're really happy to bring TJ home. For your information, TJ toured with a huge show called Bowfire for...
Twelve years.
Twelve years, all over the world, to every continent except Antarctica. And that now ends, and he's available to come. And he directed that short version that we did with six actors, and toured around to the public schools as a history lesson about the Santa Fe Trail. Also, from Raton, we were lucky enough to have Frank Lucero, who knows all the dances and the music that he learned from his family in the past, and he staged those dances. And he is here again, and he will be part of the team that we're putting together and do the dances and the music for the show. And Frank says he won't say anything. But we're very pleased to have him. Frank is retired from the railroad, as a matter of fact. Right. And I've also asked Sandy Solano Langham to do western wear costumes. Who could be better for western wear? And she has agreed to help us. And we're putting together the team, and we will soon be announcing auditions for the acting in the show. And unfortunately, Wayne Armocost, that I'm working with, could not be here tonight. He had another obligation. But we did see the site today, and we will be in the Coors Building and be doing the show for about twelve performances in October, hoping that this grows to be a major tourist attraction. We already have one busload coming from Albuquerque, and we will be working. I think of Canyon, Texas, where they do the play Texas, which is a musical drama which brings in thousands of people every summer. And I can see that the same thing could happen here. We've chosen to do it in the fall so that we are not in competition, and don't take anything away from the shows that will be running in the Schuler during the summer. And are there any questions?
You mean the Coors Building at NRA?
At NRA.
Yeah. When you said Coors Building, I'm thinking of First Street.
Oh, First Street.
I'm going first.
No, no, no.
That's pretty tiny, then you...
No, we looked, and surprisingly enough, the stage is big enough that we will construct scenery, and actually, we have chairs to move in, we've already negotiated that, rather than sitting on benches at tables, et cetera. And the NRA Whittington Center has said, yes, we can serve a busload for dinner before the show. Yes, we use motels, put up fifty people from a busload in town. And so we will be working on our local people this year, and we want everybody to see the show, and we're just announcing it to you as a courtesy so that you know what we're doing, and you hear it right from the horse's mouth. Right? Any questions? Any comments?
Sounds like a fun project.
Yes. We want to do Identity, Raton, the home of the Santa Fe Trail start, and a beautiful musical drama. There's music and dances and story with Kit Carson and Governor Bent and Governor Armiho, et cetera, et cetera. So we get a touch of history, and we're going to do competition to Texas.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is deliberate an act on award of bid for bear-proof dumpster Jason?
Mayor, Commissioner, you have before you a recommendation for award for bear-proof dumpster latch purchase. These are the retrofit kits that you can see on the container that's outside. They're in addition to the dumpster that the Game and Fish would be buying. We've estimated a quantity of 750 kits, which are two latches per kit. Fifty of them would be held to swap out. We anticipate 700 dumpsters coming from Game and Fish. This bid also includes the installation, so for somewhere around the neighborhood of $156 apiece, we would have the latches and them installed on the containers. We did only receive the one bid, but our estimate was considerably higher for these services, and I feel confident that since Mr. Mosman had helped develop the prototype to begin with, we're going to get a quality product. The pricing seemed fair to me. But our match on this grant for 700 dumpsters was approximately $235,000. So we will have to think about how we will spend our remaining cash match, whether it's buying additional containers and retrofit kits, or maybe purchasing equipment or roll-offs or something to augment the grant.
Okay.
Have a call into Game and Fish to start those discussions now that we know the pricing on that. But at this time, I would like to recommend award to H.J. Mosman Manufacturing for the latches. There are some timelines associated with the grant. All of the work should be done by June 30th. We've asked for the dumpster latches to be completed by the 10th of May, and installation to be completed by May 30th in the request for pricing, and that is, the price is including all applicable gross receipts tax. We had anticipated that we might get some interest from inside the city and outside of the state. It didn't materialize, but we made them price it that way, just in case it had.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Phillips?
Are you going to go with the design that's welded on or replaceable?
We are going to go with the bolt-on design. That way, it can be swapped in the field without welding, and a little bit easier for us to work with, first having to bring one back to the shop every time one goes bad, because we're anticipating with any repetitive use, you're going to have to replace some of them here and there.
I make a motion to approve the, an award, the bid for the bear-proof dumpster latches.
Just a second. We have a motion and a second to award the bear-proof latch dumpsters, dumpster layer, bear-proof dumpster latch purchase, the award to Ace Mosman. I don't know what his company is. Anyway.
Ace Mosman Manufacturing.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protonsigata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner, and with that, we will initiate some kind of purchase agreement for the $115,495. With that project forward.
Thank you. And we're very happy that it's going to someone that's local.
Yes, ma'am.
Deliberate an act on award of professional service agreement with Southern Oasis Incorporated doing business as operational consultants for professional service relating to solid waste transfer station slash recycle center.
Mayor Commissioner, what we have before you tonight is a professional service agreement for services relating to our pending transfer station. As of the current time, we have $500,000 in solid waste loan proceeds earmarked towards this construction. We are optimistic that we have secured funding that we're not yet ready to announce for an additional $250,000, which would bring us a total of about $750,000 to work with. Based on the generalized engineering scale, we'd be looking at consulting fees somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 to design and construct this. Mr. Berry and I have proposed that we do this engineering in-house with the assistance of some technical support from Southern Oasis Incorporated, DBA Operational Consultants, essentially Joe Lewandowski, who you have met in the past, who has performed our solid waste audit. This is Joe's company. What we have is an hourly agreement. We have not set a do-not-exceed amount on it, but it's something that we can, I believe that total of Joe's services are going to fall somewhere in the $15,000 range for his technical support. Mr. Berry and I would do the remainder of the design, construction, management in-house, and we would try to take all of our monies to the project rather than pay consultants. It would be much easier to do so, but our funding is pretty tight to get what we want done with the funding. So what we would like to do is award a contract with Mr. Lewandowski. Feel free to assign any cap to the not-to-exceed if it makes you all more comfortable at this point. He's basically got some hourly rate, and I can proceed that Mr. Berry and I will be doing the bulk of the work. We're just really looking for some expertise on equipment, door sizing, trying to tweak a couple of the facilities that we've seen and like into a hybrid of what would work for us based on our volume.
And my recommendation, Mayor, is that we do add a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 to this agreement, which doesn't mean that we will get to that limit, but that seems reasonable. And then we'll come back to the commission as we go. We will need to employ some specialized services like mechanical engineering or electrical engineering, and also geotechnical, but we plan on stretching the dollars as much as we can.
Okay. So you're telling us you have $500,000 for the loan agreement for this project, and you're proposing to hopefully spend about $15,000 for an outside consultant, and take the remainder of money and put it towards the station itself?
That in addition to the $250,000 that we are very optimistic that we are going to nail down very soon.
Okay, all right. As long as I understand the figures.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept this professional services agreement with the addendum not to exceed $20,000.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to award the professional service agreement to Southern Oasis Incorporated, as stated by this contract, with the addition of not to exceed $20,000. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Question?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank both of you guys, because I've been listening to you talk on this, and the way that you're watching the money for the city is to be commended. They're not going out and throwing any money around, and so by doing what you're doing, and you guys will do the bulk of this, I really appreciate it as a commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I want.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protonsigata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Deliberate an act on Water Trust Board Resolution Grant, WTB-255 Agreement Extension. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, this is an extension to the Water Trust Board Agreement that we got in 2012, which was a million dollars for restoration efforts after the track fire. We are actually, as you can see on here out of that, the remainder is only $34,000, but due to weather that hit in November, we were stopped completely even on our river stewardship grant that we were working on and pulled out of the watershed. So we applied for an extension till the end of April to give us time to finish this last of it, which will be some final work, which we are doing with local contractors in the watershed. And we were granted that. It does require this amendment to our grant agreement that was adopted December 20th, 2012, and it actually extends it to April 28th, 2016. It was three-year grant. It's just an extension of that period of time. At this point, it was granted, it was signed by myself and Mr. Berry, when we applied for it, but we do require commission approval on this. I've already gotten a notice that I have less than 60 days list on our schedule, so they're already pushing, but we do need to get this paperwork filed. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Campbell?
Another question, we accept this amendment, the Water Trust Board Restoration Grant, WTB-255 Agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Water Trust Board Restoration Grant, WTB-255 Agreement Extension. Roll call vote, please, or you have any other questions? No?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protonsigata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes. Deliberate an act on Budget Adjustment Number Seven, Resolution 2016-15. Michael, yeah?
Mayor Commissioner, in your packet is Budget Adjustment Number Seven. I actually just saw a typo that we need to correct. The general fund adjustments should be a net increase or decrease of zero, so in order for that to come out, the $3,000 under the drug tests and physicals, I would need to make that an adjustment of only $2,050. So I apologize for that, I didn't catch that. So then, it would be going from $5,000 to $7,050, so we can make that correction. Other than that, we're just kind of moving money around from our various line items. On the audit expense, when we contract with our audit firm every year, we do split the expenses between RPS, the city, and water. And so the last couple of years, our audit firm has been breaking it out for me by how many hours they spent on each entity's audits. So they did put a little bit of additional time into ours, and as a result of that, we had a timely audit, and it went well. So I am asking that we move some money. I had some additional funds available under professional services, and this would be the final bill for this year's audit. So they've completed everything except the lodgers tax portion of that, and so they will be here at the end of the month to do three lodgers tax audits. But the lodgers tax portion does not come out of the general fund, that's actually budgeted in the Lodgers Tax Fund 205. Other than that, in the other funds, I should have put a note on here on the Recreation Fund. This year, Jared Chatterley has helped with the youth basketball, and so we did take in some additional youth program revenue, which was the registrations for that program. And so in order to cover the expense of the T-shirts, there would be a little bit of revenue left over, and we would like to apply that to our operational costs for the facility. So we're increasing the revenue 1,895, and then our expenses net to 1,895. Other than that, the rest of them are just line item adjustments. Are there any questions?
No questions. Make a motion to approve Budget Adjustment Number Seven in the Resolution 2016-15.
We have a motion and a second to approve Budget Adjustment Number Seven, Resolution All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Managers, report.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. I see that we have Chief Matthews from Fire Department on hand here, and that reminded me that I'd like to point out, Chief Matthews had taken a lot of initiative in contacting federal emergency management, and actually came to Raton, and the chief had prepared a mitigation plan, and what that does is opens the door for us to look at potential funding through FEMA's mitigation program. So the chief had brought several people from FEMA to town, showed them around, and we looked at the possibility of obtaining some mitigation money through FEMA. So thank you, Chief.
So thank you, Chief. Chief is working on that now. Chief had told me that there have been a couple of grass fire incidents here recently, and it is fairly dry right now, so just to caution people that it's a little dry and to be careful. You know, it's not something that we've dealt with for a while now. So just to caution that we haven't had moisture for a while in dry conditions, and they have responded to some fires. I did attend a meeting this morning with Congressman Ben Ray Liu-Han, along with Commissioner Schuster and Commissioner Chavez. He had been in town, just to touch base locally with county, city, and hospital, see what's going on, and we had updated him on several things that we've had underway recently, and he was here for the morning before he went to Clayton, and he's just making the rounds in the district right now. I would tell the commission that I've, on Friday afternoon, went back to DOS Aviation in Pueblo, their training facility there. Mayor Protem Segada was in attendance, and State Representative Dennis Roche was interested in seeing the facility. It's an impressive facility, and the representative was, I think, extremely impressed by not only the facility, but the personnel there at DOS. And so he's excited, as we are, about DOS moving forward with operations. And I've been in contact with the company. They do have a training scheduled for March 11th through 13th. I think that's what they call their spin training, and so they'll commence operations, and that's the fairly modest start that we talked about while they're out ramping up, but it's a starting place for us. So fairly small class, they'll come in for those days, conduct the training, and we will be in contact with them. We've talked about solid waste issues here tonight, and I would just pass along to the commission and the public that we are coming up on bear season, and we, you know, try to advise the public to modify our behavior in regard to handling of trash and solid waste during bear season. So they should be, we would expect them to become active shortly. And one effective strategy as far as solid waste is to know the day that it's, solid waste is picked up in your neighborhood, it's your dumpster, and try to time that, you know, putting the trash in the dumpster to that day. That's the most effective strategy that we've had so far. But the bear-proof dumpsters, we're still ramping up on that. We should ought to start seeing some of those out this summer, but they will come in batches. We'll do the modification to them, and we'll put them out there as soon as we can. It's going to be some period until we really get that number that Jason mentioned, 700 containers out. So we're definitely going to go through this summer dealing with bears. And if it stays dry, that kind of intensifies that. So we would ask the cooperation of the public in helping us to deal with that issue in the solid waste. While we're on the subject, you know, and talking to the public, I think it's warming up now, and at the city, we talk about, you know, more of the outside work gearing up for maintenance of parks and things like painting. And I would pass that along to the public as well, that when we're bringing people to town like the DOS people and we're showing them what we have here, if we all kind of pitch in together, clean up the town, paint structures, you know, sweep the sidewalk or pick up sediment in the gutter like we had talked about last time, that's really going to make a difference and make it, help our success in marketing Raton to our outside visitors. So hopefully, we can encourage everyone to take a look at what you have, and, you know, some paint on a structure goes a long way. To that effect, our code enforcement officials are going to be very active in the near future as far as contacting owners with dilapidated buildings or hazardous or unsafe buildings, and we would ask for their cooperation in resolving those. And we do have structures that simply need removed, and so we would work with those. If there's some cooperative solution that we can work with the property owner on a building, we are open for that conversation and those suggestions. But our guys will be out there making contact with property owners to try to get some momentum going on that cleanup issue. There is a conference tomorrow in Santa Fe through New Mexico Economic Development District, and I did plan on making a trip to Santa Fe tomorrow. The conference is from 9:00 to noon, and we plan to pick up some information that they showed us. I didn't bring my flyer in to read from you on what that is, but I'll report to you at the next meeting as to what we find out and learn, but try to continue our efforts on economic development. So I'll go down and meet with them. In the flyer, they had talked about some potential funding opportunities for prospective economic development prospects, so we'll find out the information on that. I did not make it to this conference, but there was a pre-bid conference, I believe, on Friday at Raton Public Service Company, and that was to, prior to bidding, the demolition removal or salvage of Vortzilla equipment. So that bid is moving along in which a contractor would come in and remove the Vortzilla part of the current generation facility prior to the general electric equipment going in. So there's a couple of phases to that, which RPS is working on, and I'll stay in contact with RPS going through that process. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Do you have anything? Anyone?
Nope.
Is there any other business to come before this body? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.